Welcome to the West Virginia Legislature on the West Virginia Channel. I'm Beth Voorhees. Today marks the start of the special budget session at the Capitol as lawmakers return to Charleston to not just write a balanced budget for the 2017 fiscal year, which begins July 1st, but also close the gap in the current budget year and assure the state can pay its bills. For the 2016 or current fiscal year, lawmakers will be looking for around $110 million in agency accounts or from the Rainy Day Fund to close the gap. For 2017, the gap grows to $270 million. Here's a look inside the House chamber right now. Lawmakers left the regular session in March without passing a 2017 budget. During the session, the Senate passed some revenue enhancements such as a $1 additional tax on tobacco products and a 1 cent increase in the sales tax. The House refused to consider those increases. And here's a live look into the Senate chamber right now. This special session was called by Governor Tomlin last week. The bills proposed by the governor will be the 2017 budget, increasing a tax on cigarettes and tobacco products, and imposing a tax on e-cigarettes. A bill increasing the consumer sales and service tax rate and the use tax rate by not more than one percentage point. A bill eliminating the exemption from the sales tax on sales of telecommunications and services, that is cell phones and landlines. A bill to expire unappropriated balances in the general revenue budget from various state agencies, and a bill to allow the governor to furlough state employees in the event of fiscal emergencies. The governor's call to the legislature is limited to these issues only. And we will bring you coverage of the House and Senate for this first special session of the 2016 West Virginia Legislature as soon as they gavel in. Please stand by. This is the West Virginia Legislature on the West Virginia Channel. The House is in session, however, there is an audio difficulty from the House chamber. They are working on it at the Capitol, and we will join the House as soon as the audio is working. Again, the House is in session. This is a live picture from the floor of the House of Delegates. We're waiting for them to correct their audio difficulties. I'm sure it would be momentarily. Please stand by.
...fund, Fund 0175, fiscal year 2009, organization 2300, appropriation 64200, $8,500,000 from the Attorney General Consumer Protection Recovery Fund, Fund 1509, fiscal year 2016, organization 1500, $2,500,000 from the West Virginia Healthcare Authority Healthcare Cost Review Fund, Fund 5375, fiscal year 2016, organization 0507, $29 million from the Office of the Secretary of Revenue, Revenue Shortfall Reserve Fund, Fund 7005, fiscal year 2016, organization 0701, $5 million from the Insurance Commissioner, Insurance Commission Fund, Fund 7152, fiscal year 2016, organization 0704, $4,631,089.49 from the Lottery Commission, Operating and Expense Fund, Fund 7200, fiscal year 2016, organization 0705, and $2 million from the Public Service Commission, Fund 8623, fiscal year 2016, organization 0926. Sixth, a bill authorizing the governor to furlough state employees in the event of certain fiscal emergencies. And seventh, legislation authorizing and appropriating the expenditure of public funds to pay the expenses for the extraordinary session. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the great seal of the state of West Virginia to be affixed. O'Reilly Tomlin, Governor.
Chair recognizes gentleman from the 58th, Delegate Coles.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move the Speaker be authorized to appoint a committee of three to notify the Senate that the House delegates has assembled, an extraordinary session is ready to enter upon the business stated in the proclamation by which we have been called together.
The gentleman from the 58th moves that the Speaker be authorized to appoint a committee of three to notify the Senate that the House delegates has assembled, an extraordinary session, and is ready to enter upon the business as stated in the proclamation by which it has been called together. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, declare the motion adopted. On behalf of the House, the Chair appoints the gentleman from the 7th, Delegate Ireland, the gentleman from the 53rd, Delegate Smith, and the gentleman from the 48th, Delegate Trecosta, as a delegation on behalf of the House to inform the Senate that the House has assembled. Chair recognizes gentleman from the 58th, Delegate Coles.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move the Speaker be authorized to appoint a committee of three to join with a similar committee of the Senate to notify His Excellency, the Governor, that the legislature is assembled in an extraordinary session and is ready to proceed to the business stated in the proclamation.
The gentleman 58th moves that the Speaker be authorized to appoint a committee of three to join with a similar committee on the part of the Senate to inform His Excellency, the Governor, that the legislature is assembled in extraordinary session and is ready to proceed with the business as stated in the proclamation. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, declare the motion adopted. On behalf of the House, the Chair appoints the lady from the 32nd, Delegate Kessinger, the gentleman from the 11th, Delegate Atkinson, and the lady from the 46th, Delegate Smith, as members of the House delegation to join with similar delegation of the Senate to inform His Excellency, the Governor, that the House has assembled. introduction of guests. Reports of standing committees. Reports of select committees. Messages from the executive.
Dear Speaker Armstead, I herewith submit pursuant to the Constitution of the State of West Virginia, a budget bill for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016. Sincerely, O'Reilly Tomlin, Governor.
Message will be received. Bill be referred to the Committee on Finance.
House Bill 101, Budget Bill.
Bill be referred to Committee on Finance. Messages from the Senate. Resolutions. Petitions. Motions. Bills introduced.
The following bills are introduced pursuant to Rule 92. House Bill 102, Supplemental Appropriation.
Bill be referred to the Committee on Finance.
House Bill 103, Increasing the Taxation on Cigarettes.
Bill be referred to Committee on Finance.
You're watching the West Virginia Legislature on the West Virginia Channel.
Unfinished business. Bills on third reading. Bills on second reading. Bills on first reading. Gentleman from the 58th.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for our colleagues, Delegates Ambler, Bordersheppard, Duke Ellington, Espinoza, Fleishower, Fleury, Hornbuckle, Manchin, R. Phillips, Schott, Skinner, and Zetezala.
That objection leaves will be granted. Marks by members of the House. The gentleman from the 58th, Delegate Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to request a moment of silence for high school senior Ms. Sarah Powell. She paged for the House several times, and she's lost her battle with cystic fibrosis.
Members may be seated. The gentleman from the 28th, Delegate Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Delegate Upson and I would like to request also a moment of silence. Our colleague, Delegate Espinoza, has experienced the death of his mother in recent days, and we just would ask everyone to please stand.
If members would again, please rise. Members may be seated. Miscellaneous business. Gentleman from the 58th.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Subject to announcements, I move the House adjourn until 11:00 a.m. tomorrow.
Our announcements. The gentleman from 35th, Delegate Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Inquire about the availability of the House chamber today at 2:00 p.m.?
Chamber is available.
Thank you. I'd like to call for a joint meeting of the House and Senate Finance Committees today at 2:00 p.m. here in the House chamber. The Cabinet Secretary of Revenue shall discuss the new budget in front of us, and will also address the April revenue numbers year-to-date, as well as the S&amp;P bond rating downgrade. We'll follow with a meeting of the House Finance Committee at 4:00 p.m. up in the House Finance Room, and then we'll also have a meeting tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. of the House Finance Committee in the House Finance Committee Room. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Gentleman from 4th, Delegate Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Legislative Oversight Commission on Education will meet tomorrow, Tuesday, May 17th, at 9:00 a.m. in the Senate Finance Committee Room. Thank you.
Gentleman from the 50th, Delegate Caputo.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The House Democrats will caucus today at 4:30 or after the Finance Committee meeting, whichever is later, in House GovOrk.
Further announcements. Not the question for the House, is a motion by the gentleman from the 58th that the House stand adjourned until 11:00 a.m. tomorrow. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, declare the House adjourned until 11:00 a.m. tomorrow.
And a very brief organizational meeting for the House of Delegates today. We expect that in the Senate as well. During extraordinary sessions like this, a lot of work is done by committees and not so much on the floors. We here at West Virginia Public Broadcasting will be monitoring the daily calendars of the House and Senate and bring you those floor sessions when these bills come before the bodies. At 2 o'clock today, you just heard... At 2:00 today, you just heard Delegate Eric Nelson call for a 2:00 meeting in the House chamber, a joint finance committee between, a committee meeting between the House and Senate. While they were here, from Revenue Secretary Robert Kiss regarding the budget projections and the Governor's proposed budget for 2017. We will bring you that program live here at 2:00. Some very important information will be given at this meeting to members of the House and Senate Finance Committee. We will take you to the Senate in just a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The clerk will now call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Senator Ashley. Senator Beach. Senator Beach. Senator Blair. Senator Bowley. Senator Bosso. Senator Carmichael. Senator Klein. Senator Faismar. Senator Ferns. Senator Gaunch. Senator Hall. Senator Carnes. Senator Kessler. Senator Kirkendall. Senator Laird. Senator Leonhardt. Senator Maynard. Senator Miller. Senator Mullins. Senator Palumbo. Senator Primal. Senator Prezioso. Senator Romano. Senator Snyder. Senator Snyder. Senator Stallings. Senator Seipolt. Senator Takubo. Senator Trump. Senator Unger. Senator Walters. Senator Williams. Senator Wolfel. Senator Yost. Senator Cole, Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thirty-four members having answered to their names, I declare a quorum present. The Chair recognizes a delegation from the House.
Mr. President!
You're watching the West Virginia Legislature on the West Virginia Channel. This is a look inside the Senate chamber.
Thank you, sir. The message will be received. The clerk has proclamation from the executive.
I, Earl Ray Tomlin, by virtue of the authority vested in the Governor by Section 7, Article 7 of the Constitution of West Virginia, do hereby call the West Virginia Legislature to convene an extraordinary session at noon on the 16th day of May, 2016, in its chambers in the state capital, city of Charleston, for the limited purpose of considering and acting upon the following matters. First, a bill enacting a state budget for fiscal year 2017. Second, a bill increasing the tax on cigarettes and tobacco products and imposing a tax on e-cigarettes. Third, a bill increasing the consumer sales and service tax rate and the use tax rate by not more than one percentage point. Fourth, a bill eliminating the exemption from consumer sales and service tax and use tax on sales of telecommunications service and ancillary services. Fifth, a bill expiring to the unappropriated balance in the state fund general revenue for the fiscal year 2016, the following: twelve million one hundred fifty thousand dollars from the Joint Expenses Tax Reduction and Federal Funding Increased Compliance Traffic Fund, Fund 0175, fiscal year 2009. Organization 2300. Appropriation 64200. Eight point five million dollars from the Attorney General Consumer Protection Recovery Fund, Fund 1509, fiscal year 2016. Organization 1500. Two point five million dollars from the West Virginia Health Care Authority Health Care Cost Review Fund, Fund 5375, fiscal year 2016. Organization 0507. Twenty-nine million dollars from the Office of the Secretary of Revenue, Revenue Shortfall Reserve Fund, Fund 7005, fiscal year 2016. Organization 0701. Five million dollars from the Insurance Commissioner, Insurance Commission Fund, Fund 7152, fiscal year 2016. Organization 0704. Four million six hundred thirty-one thousand eighty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents from the Lottery Commission Operating and Expense Fund, Fund 7200, fiscal year 2016. Organization 0705. And two million dollars from the Public Service Commission, Fund 8623, fiscal year 2016. Organization 0926. Sixth, a bill authorizing the Governor to furlough state employees in the event of certain fiscal emergencies. And Seventh, legislation authorizing and appropriating the expenditure of public funds to pay the expenses for the extraordinary session. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the great seal of the State of West Virginia to be affixed, done at the Capitol in the city of Charleston, State of West Virginia, this 12th day of May, in the year of our Lord, 2016, and in the 153rd year of the state. Signed, Earl Ray Tomlin, Governor, attested to by Natalie E. Tennant, Secretary of State.
The proclamation will be received. Senator from Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request unanimous consent to introduce a resolution from the floor.
Is there objection? Chair hears none. Clerk will read the resolution.
Senate Resolution 101 by Senator Carmichael. Raising a committee to inform the House of Delegates, the Senate has assembled an extraordinary session.
Senator from Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request unanimous consent that the resolution be taken up for immediate consideration. Committee reference be dispensed with, and the resolution be placed upon its adoption.
Is there objection? Chair hears none. Questions on the adoption of the resolution? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I declare the resolution adopted. Chair would appoint the Senator from Roan, the senior senator from the 8th, and the senator from Logan to notify the House of Delegates that the Senate has assembled. The senator from Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request unanimous consent to introduce another resolution from the floor.
Is there objection? Chair hears none. Clerk will read the resolution.
Senate Resolution 102 by Senator Carmichael, raising a committee to wait upon the Governor.
Senator from Jackson.
Mr. President, I request unanimous consent that the resolution be taken up for immediate consideration. Committee reference be dispensed with, and the resolution be placed upon its adoption.
Is there objection? Chair hears none. Questions on the adoption of the resolution? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I declare the resolution adopted. The Chair would appoint the senator from Preston, the senator from Upshire, and the senator from Marshall to notify the Governor that the legislature has assembled. Communications from the executive.
I have executive message number one dated May 16, 2016, addressed to the Honorable William P. Cole III, President of the West Virginia Senate. Dear President Cole, I herewith submit pursuant to the Constitution of the State of West Virginia, a budget bill for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016. Sincerely, Earl Ray Tomlin, Governor.
Message will be received. Introduction of bills.
Senate Bill 1001 by Senators Cole, Mr. President, and Kessler, by request of the executive, the budget bill.
Bill be referred to the Committee on Finance.
Senate Bill 1002 by Senators Cole, Mr. President, and Kessler, by request of the executive, expiring funds from various accounts to unappropriated balance in state fund general revenue.
Bill be referred to the Committee on Finance.
Senate Bill 1003 by Senator Kessler, by request of the executive, imposing consumer sales and service tax and use tax on telecommunications and ancillary services.
Bill be referred to the Committee on Finance.
Senate Bill 1004 by Senator Kessler, by request of the executive, increasing consumer sales and service tax and use tax.
The bill will be referred to the Committee on Finance.
Senate Bill 1005 by Senators Cole, Mr. President, and Kessler, by request of the executive, increasing tax rate on cigarettes and tobacco products.
Senator from Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request unanimous consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration. Committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair hears none. Clerk will read the bill a first time.
Senate Bill 1005, increasing tax rate on cigarettes and tobacco products, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced. The senator from Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Subject to announcements, I move the Senate stand in recess until 4:00 p.m. today.
Are there announcements? Junior Senator from the 6th.
I would like to make an introduction. Mr. President, in the seat in the rear gallery is Mrs. Heather Thompson, in her sixth grade class, from Roosevelt Elementary in Point Pleasant. Senate, please make them welcome.
So we're on announcements.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I announce that there will be a Finance Committee meeting, actually a joint meeting with the Finance Committee of the House in the House chamber at 2:00 p.m. to hear an explanation from the Governor's office of his introduced bill. And then the plan is I will not announce the time. We'll have a 4:00 meeting. It will probably have some sort of a finance meeting either in the morning or in the afternoon. Just depends on where we are with the flow of the work.
The senior senator from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Announce the Minority Party Caucus at 1:00 p.m. in the President's conference room.
Further announcements? If not a question for the Senate, does the Senate stand in recess until 4:00 p.m. today? All those in favor will say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have declared the Senate in recess.
And a brief Senate session as well. You did notice that they took the bill that would increase the tax on tobacco and cigarettes and moved it to first reading. That way, when the Senate Finance Committee considers this bill, when it's reported to the floor, it will be on second reading. And so it moves quicker that way when the legislature does that. It's just a move to make the legislation work more quickly. You heard again the announcement, at 2:00 there is a joint committee meeting of the House and Senate Finance Committees. Well, they will hear from Secretary of Revenue, Robert Kiss, regarding the Governor's outlined budget. That's at 2:00, live from the House chamber, and we will carry that here on the West Virginia Channel at 2:00. Some vital information there that we don't want to miss. We here at the West Virginia Channel will be monitoring the daily calendars in the House and Senate to bring you the debate and votes on these issues. Most of the work during a special legislative session like this is in the Finance Committee. Lawmakers will have brief floor sessions. Whenever these bills come before the House and Senate, the West Virginia Channel will provide coverage, and we will keep you informed when that occurs. We will be back at 2:00 for the Joint Finance Committee meeting. Until then, I'm Beth Forhees for the West Virginia Channel, a service of West Virginia Public Broadcasting. Public Broadcasting.